Okay. Let's go ahead and start. Shall we?
Excuse me, what? I missed the...
This is where we start.
Sure, I'm ready. Let's go.
So, welcome, all of you. Monday, the 20th, November. I hope that's the date. That's what it says here, and I'm reading it right from here.
It's going by quick.
And quick? Boy, yeah, the year's going by quick. So, 15 minutes prior to our meeting. If you would like to address the council, we'd just like to know your name. You've got three minutes. If you are going to, if you have asked to speak to council by a written request, that will come later on in the meeting. If you want to talk about a topic that we're going to talk about, wait until you get the opportunity during that session. So, this is sort of open mic for any discussion that you would like to have, or at least talk to the council without. In the next 15 minutes, if none, we'll start the meeting. So, if someone would like to address the mic, we just need your name.
Good evening. Thank you. Sheila Kimmel, 37 Eagle Crest Drive, Canyon City. I have just two questions, if I may. I was wondering when the citizen survey, the official one, the full copy of that will be available on the city website. You have a very nice recap, but I'd like to know when the full copy with the number of responses, et cetera, will be available. So, that's question number one. And number two was the update on the 2016-2020 strategic plan goals. I know you had that, the goals that you set, and you were going to update them once the new survey came out. So, those were my two questions for you this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Sheila.
You bet.
Relative to the survey, we have the summary on the site, but we can put all the data on there. It's about three inches thick, but we can put it on there. And as it relates to the strategic plan, we'll update that with a new council after the beginning of the year.
January.
Would you like to have a copy of that personally?
If it's on the website, I don't need to trouble you with that.
Sheila, that would be a lot of copying and expenses. I did not get back to you because, like Tony said, it is very voluminous. It would probably be beneficial to get it on the website, so you don't pay him for paper.
Right, exactly. My point, too, because it is large.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Sheila. Go ahead. It's not on the website yet.
The summary is, but not all the backup information and detail, as I said, that's probably several hundred pages.
So, are we going to put all that on the website?
Yeah, sure.
And it'll be like a PDF they can download, you know, for cruising through. Thank you.
What causes all those numbers of pages?
There's like five different reports, everything from council districts, demographics, socioeconomic.
Oh, okay. You're right. Okay. Right. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing none, I'd like to go ahead and call the order. The Monday, the November 20th meeting of the regular city council meeting. Could we have the invocation from Alicia Swerengen? Would you please rise?
Well, Father God, we just are so grateful for this city of Canyon City. And Lord, we're here because we love the people of Canyon City, and we care about them so much. And so, God, we ask you to bless this city. Lord, we just take a moment, being Thanksgiving week, to say thank you for all the people that serve in this city, the nonprofit organizations, the council, the government, the police department, the educators, just everyone who serves, everyone who does business. We say thank you for everybody who has made Canyon City what it is today. God, we're grateful for what you've done in our city. And, Lord, for those that are lost, broken, and hurting, we pray that you would reach them. And, Lord, we just commit this meeting to you, and we believe that, God, that you can do great things through these people. And we just ask your blessing on our city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Hockes.
Here.
Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Ekstrom is excused. We have a quorum.
Okay. Do we have any requests, written requests to speak to council?
We have one written request to speak to council. It's from Jeff Coe, 1022 Illinois Avenue. He wants to speak to council in regard to street curb between 5th and 9th on Washington Street.
Okay. Jeff, go ahead.
Yes, I have, asking, is there any plans in the future to put a sidewalk in on Washington Street between 5th Street and 9th Street down to the school? I've lived in that, up at that area for 20 years, and we've seen it go from a mud pit road to getting a new road, and thank you very much for that. They're in the process of paving it right now. But it is very dangerous for the kids. My kids didn't go there because they went to the school, or my wife worked. But when there's snow and ice on the road, they walk out on the road, and, because there's so much snow on the side and weeds and whatever, and it's very dangerous.
We did a program on, from Central to Harrison School. Do you think there's something like that could occur there?
Can check with Adam. I think, you know, he solicits federal grants, and we're about, we've done field, which is taking place right now. And we'll be doing sidewalks at Canyon City Middle School next year, as an example. So, I'll chat with him about when this potentially could be on the future list.
I think the alternative is if the city has a program where the landowners could either encumber themselves or split the cost of the sidewalk with the city. I think we supply one or the other.
Yeah, creating an assessment district, a special district. Most people don't like to pay the direct costs of sidewalks. That's one of the reasons we've relied upon federal grants to achieve that end. So, again, I'll check with Adam, but certainly we can explore alternative sources of funding for you.
Mr. Mayor, and I would also say Lincoln School, elementary school, has also gone for decades and decades without a sidewalk. And their school principal worked together with our city engineer, Adam Lancaster, and they wrote a grant and received federal grant money to put in a sidewalk. And so, that sidewalk will be going in in the next...
2019.
Two years. They'll get their sidewalk in. And so, that also might be a great discussion to have with the school principal, that perhaps they could write another grant, a grant as well for, for the kids, a safe routes to schools grant.
Okay.
And that's, that's a nice way to get some federal money in to help pay for it.
I've talked to Mr. Lancaster, and unfortunately, our area, the city and the county both pretty much own that road, like half and half. And I don't know if that would be any problem or not.
Well, we, if we work together...
I think we could. The, of course, if it's on the county half, they'll pay for it.
Right.
I think that's a good discussion to have with the county commissioners as well. Certainly, we, we could cooperate with them, but I think it'd be a great idea.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up.
Bye.
Thank you. Anybody else? That's it? Wow. Okay. Number three is approval of the minutes for the November 6th, 2017, regular city council meeting, and November 8th, general government meeting. Are there any corrections? Mr. Meisner.
Well, I don't know if that's a correction, but on the last page of the general government committee meetings, minute, whatever it is, I thought we ended that conversation with the discussion over residential use of shipping containers, and that we needed some staff to work on that specific issue of resident, or business containers in the residential...
Scott was also questioning it in the downtown area as well, so I just left it fairly generic because he was talking to them about being in the central business district, not just residential. So, there was a question whether or not, far as residential and/or central business district. It's how I took it.
All right.
Anybody different than that?
No.
Nope.
That's how we ended it. His concern was, could they have some downtown, even though they'd be smaller than the largest one you could put in there?
Well, this was an ordinance relative to making them residences. The shipping containers in the, in a residential district, in that whole long paragraph, and it came down to, we wanted to get those shipping containers, pods, out of residential districts. And I said, if that's what we want, let's, that's what we should say, versus a whole paragraph.
Terry?
I do believe, I do believe that that is what is going to be coming to you then in the ordinance, is that they, the pods will be identified as being in a residential district and being rented.
That's fine. The minutes just don't reflect that.
Mr. Weed, did you have something?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you. Also, general government committee minutes in the discussion under water rates and stormwater fees. I would like to have my comp, my, sort of a summary of my comments expressly stated in there. And I have some very serious concerns about commercial businesses shouldering the burden of the stormwater fees. And I think we need to find some way to more equitably distribute those fees rather than dumping it all on businesses.
So, you just want me to summarize your statement regarding the commercial bearing the burden, most of the burden of the stormwater fees?
Yes. The, commercial makes up one-tenth of the properties, yet they pay, I think Harry came up, at least half of the stormwater fees.
Ms. Smith?
Tony, this is a question from the city council's consent agenda from last week on the GOCO grant, that we had passed resolution to support it.
Yes.
With striking out about the cost of maintenance, but then it came back that perhaps it was true, that wouldn't be acceptable for the GOCO grant. Was that able to be resolved?
I think their preference was a resolution that would reflect that we would maintain our portion of that trail. That's language consistent with other GOCO grants the city submitted, so we can bring that back, probably on December the 4th.
So, from what I understand is that our portion that we would be, you were concerned about the 25-year commitment to maintain, and according to Rex Brady, it's a half of a mile.
I don't care if it's a third of a mile or 10 feet. I just feel it's inappropriate for this council to commit to maintain a specific trail over anything else, and that's what that was trying to do.
For 25 years.
Or five years.
But the wording that we put in that wasn't going to be acceptable for the grant, and so I think we need to look a little bit more into it, and perhaps bring it back somewhere where it can be a compromise between Councilman Meisner's feelings.
We'll bring it back to alternative language that the city attorney's office can review to make sure it's consistent with...
I'm flexible.
I know.
Yeah, it was, it was questioned after that, that they wanted us to just arbitrarily change that resolution, and I was opposed to doing that unless council was going to approve a new resolution.
I appreciate you that, doing that.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other additions, corrections, discussions? Hearing none, could I have a motion of second?
Mr. Mayor.
Schumacher.
I make a motion that we accept the approval of the minutes from the 11/6/2017 regular city council meeting and the 11/8/2017 general government committee meeting with the...
Amendments. As amended?
Oh, yeah, so with the amendments as stated by Mr. Weed.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Weed, second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Nay.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Approved by a majority vote.
Okay. Councilmember announcements. Are there any, any council members with, that hasn't, have any announcements? Mr. Gill?
There's a planning commission meeting here Wednesday, and it's at 6 o'clock, and it's right here in these chambers.
Mr. Mayor.
Schumacher.
I would like to wish everyone within the city limits, of course, but also countywide, a happy Thanksgiving on Thursday.
Ms. Smith?
I have a couple announcements, Mr. Mayor. One, I just wanted to report back that this last Saturday, up in Dawson Ranch, the HOA had sponsored a trail maintenance day, where we are, with the help of the HOA, as well as Mike Gramowski, a local resident, who's put in over 150 hours on this project. We've been able to collaborate with the city to use Steve, our trail builder, as long as other resources, and Saturday, 49 residents came out to help restore some of the trails up in Dawson Ranch. And not all of them were from Dawson, it was from other outlying areas as well that came to help participate in that, so it just really shows some strong support for our trail systems and a passion for that amenity that we provide for our community, and are looking forward to continuing, continuing that program in the future. And my second announcement is, next week, we have stormwater task force meeting. And so, 11:30, that's Thursday, at 3:30 PM, is our regular task force meeting. I'd encourage everyone who could come to please, as we have a lot of really important issues to talk about. And also, on the next day, on Friday, at 10 AM, is a flood analysis scope. And so, that's where the water conservation has suggested that we work together with county and the ditch company to do a scope of the different projects and the potential that they have, and prioritize which ones we should concentrate on. And we need to study the scope of that project and the possibility of our support and the counties and the ditch company's support for that. All of those meetings will be here at City Hall.
What time was the meeting Thursday?
3:30.
Okay. What was it, 11:30?
Oh, well, it's on November 30th. Yeah, sorry.
What time is it? December 1st?
So, November, November 30th is 3:30 PM, and then December 1st at 10 AM.
Mr. Weed?
Yeah, I don't know if you were going to cover this, but there, the vision committee meeting that's regularly scheduled for this Wednesday, the 22nd, is canceled, and City Hall's going to be closed Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday. And I'll echo Kathy's comments about, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And the really nifty news is, the Rotary Club today finished removing the star on the hill and installing the new star. And so, it's pretty, it's pretty nifty. It's, I was up there briefly, and so, I don't know if it's lit tonight, but it is ready to go, so there is going to be a star on the hill this year.
That's good, because I got comments about that last year.
Yeah.
Well, you guys deserve a star for that. Oh, and coffee with the mayor will be Thursday, the 30th, here at City Hall, not at 8 o'clock. 8 o'clock. What? Okay. Anybody else? So, let's talk about special meetings. We are suggesting, or talk about, the special meeting, council meetings for Monday, the 27th and Monday, the 18th. So, we have some discussion on that. Is that something you want to do, or you don't want to do, or do you know the reasons for it?
What time?
What?
6.
The proposed meeting on the 27th, we proposed for like 3 o'clock or 3:30. We think it would probably take an hour. It's, the intent is to wrap up your discussions and provide us directions on the water and stormwater fees for 2018. And we know we've expended a lot of effort and time on two other sessions, and if we don't do this, this will get moved to the January agenda, where we have two new council members, and we might be going back and starting from scratch. So, we're just trying to take advantage of the knowledge you already have and build upon that, to provide us some direction at the special meeting. And then, the ordinance would be first read at the December 4th meeting, and then adopted on the December 18th special meeting. That meeting shouldn't last more than a few minutes.
I have a lot of concern. I have a lot of concern for the stormwater and the future of that, so I, I feel like maybe it's something we should discuss.
I don't understand, I don't necessarily know or appreciate the rush. What, what is there, why can't, why can't we, I'm assuming that if it's explainable to us, it's also explainable to new council people that are coming in. I am concerned about even myself understanding the whole thing, and then we're going to go from there to an ordinance right away, and I'm just not in favor of that.
Yeah, this will be the third meeting. We don't intend it to be a rush. You've invested a number of hours already on the subject. If you want to wait until January, that's your prerogative, which is trying to take advantage of the knowledge that you currently have and that this council has on the issues of stormwater and water rates, because it is a very complex subject matter that would put two new members at a disadvantage. We'd have to really spend some time getting them up to speed.
Are all of council members going to be here on the 27th?
Well, I'll be out of town.
Scott will be, will Scott be back by then?
He's supposed to be, yes.
I have another appointment on the 27th at 3:00. I could be available at 3:30 each, but whatever, whatever your flavor is. Whether we do or do not have it is, I, I'll go with the flavor of council. So, whatever works.
Well, Councilmember Weed, you're the one that's going out. There's, I mean, you have only two more meetings, a couple more meetings left.
Well, I mean, I'm, I would like to discuss it some more. I kind of agree with the mayor that I don't feel compelled to rush this. I think we kind of took the $400,000 out of the budget or moved it at our last meeting to accommodate, taking a little more time to deliberate this, but, I mean, those two meetings will be my last chance as a councilman to have some input.
We could still have a meeting. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have an approval of the ordinance on the 4th.
That's correct.
There's really no point in having a lengthy discussion. If it's going to need to be voted on by the new council, they should be participants in that discussions.
So, what are you saying?
Well, I guess it depends on our commitment. If we, if we want to get this done and taken care of now, so we can move forward, or take our time and discuss it at more length.
I mean, I'm comfortable with new council dealing with it if the rest of the council is comfortable, and I don't know, I think it's, for that, for that particular discussion, I think it's imperative that there be seven council members involved in that discussion. And if there's going to be anybody missing, I think we need to find the time when everybody's going to be here.
Yeah, I'll be out of town, so, you know, and if there's another date to look at, I'll, I'll consider, but...
Yeah, we're, we're fine with that, I mean, from the staff's perspective, either now or later, it works for us. It's the same amount of work. We just wanted to give you that opportunity. If it doesn't work out, we'll schedule this for January with the new council.
I would like to be able to schedule for the 27th at 3:30. Let's have the discussion and let the latter part of that suspend to see what that discussion leads to. If we're not comfortable with that point, then, and I would encourage the new council members, I know one of them is here, we could get a comment from her right here and now that she will be here. Sorry to put you on the spot, ma'am, but...
27th.
November 27th.
Monday.
I'll be here.
Oh, good. We have that on record then, right, Dolly? Good.
I would go ahead and suggest that you go ahead and call the meeting for the 27th and hold off calling the special meeting for the, for the 18th, until you know better.
I think that's fair enough. So, 3:30 on the 27th, we'll do our initial, and I or someone will get ahold of John Hamrick. John's not here.
He's out of town till the 28th, unfortunately.
He's missing one of our meetings? What is this?
He's already sliding.
Sliding, on that motorhome, probably, yeah. Are you listening, John? Okay, let's move on.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we schedule a meeting for November 27th at 3:30 to discuss stormwater and water fees.
Second.
Second, oh. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye, but I want a detailed note taken, so that I can get them and read them when I get back.
You'd be able to watch it on YouTube.
Right, I think that'll be on YouTube. You're a reader, join them.
If you want it verbatim on YouTube.
But, yeah, I trust other council members. I'd say, aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
I feel like I just signed up for detention.
Yeah.
You just did. It's a drip system. Okay. Adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Tony, would you review the consent agenda items, please?
Yes, Mayor and council, 5A would authorize street closures at Main Street between 2nd and 14th on various sides of the street on December 2nd, from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and this is for the Chamber of Commerce annual Christmas parade. 5B, C, and D are related in that they are not new positions, but to repurpose positions all due for succession planning and taking on new responsibilities. The first one, 5B, would be approval of, of a new deputy finance director job description and salary range. We would convert an existing position when the time arose, probably middle of, of next year, for this position to ensure a smooth professional transition in the future, because Harry's not going to be here forever. 5C would be restructuring of the department that Harry wants to accomplish, so creating a new account manager position. Again, that would come from an existing position, so that's not new either. And 5D, talking to the chief, we both recognize the value of a crime analyst, but we're really not in a position to afford a full-time person. He has a very talented administrative assistant who's willing to take on the responsibilities and training to assume crime analyst responsibility, so that's what we're proposing there in that change in job description. 5E would authorize the city manager's signature on quotes from Axon Enterprise, which is the manufacturer of the taser equipment that most people are familiar with, that police officers use in self-defense as an intermediary weapon, so they don't have to use a gun. The first contract would be for five years for the cartridge replacement of these tasers, and the second, for $24,717.20, would be a five-year agreement that's a fixed price for 20 taser replacements, because they're constantly upgrading this equipment and technology. This is also the same company, since we're talking about it, that is one of the companies, one of the premier companies in creating the cameras for police officers. I know the chief has been looking at that. We're not prepared right now to budget for it, but the big expense isn't the, the equipment itself, it's the storage of all the data and the video, so we're still working on that end of it. But it is a good technology, and I think in the near future, we'll probably be recommending it. And then, there's just a list of bills.
Would it be appropriate to, at this time, have a slight discussion from the chief about what that position is that we're talking about?
Sure.
I don't want to take up a lot of our time or yours, but I looked, what is that, chief?
Mayor, members of council, what this would propose is a lot of data that we collect that circumvents or surrounds certain crimes that investigators just don't look at, time of day, weather outside, other conditions. The best example is, in Canada, New Jersey, the police department had an operation where they took out a major drug cartel. They did all this analysis about what was going to happen, how they were going to impact the drug trade, but they didn't actually look at historical trends about when they actually take out drug cartels, what happens after. So, when they did that, their homicide rate, their robbery rate skyrocketed, because they didn't look at, historically, when they've taken down those particular drug cartels, new cartels come in, try and take over, the violence ensues, obviously, as they try and establish... establish territories. And so what this crime analysis person really is, is to look at all of the data surrounding method of operation. Primarily, we're going to look at burglaries and theft trends and potentially drug intelligence networks. That'll be how we'll start. And so coming up with maps that can be used for community development on infrastructure in certain areas or broken windows, that type of thing. So it's going to be graphic representations of the other circumstances surrounding crimes, not just necessarily who did what and how they got in. Does that give you a little bit better perspective?
Yes, it does. Any other questions? Mr. Gill?
In this, the person that's taking this on, are they working part-time now or are they working full-time now?
They're working full-time now.
So now they're going to be working full-time and a half?
You know, a lot of these duties she was doing already, just to a different degree. So she was pulling stats of, you know, how many felony convictions we had or how many crimes we had over a certain period. The only thing this is really going to do is take her to the next level for some of the functions she was already doing. So it's going to give her some additional training and some additional functionality for us. It's not going to be to the full degree of predictive analytics, which would say, okay, we've got this trend happening and this is probably where it's going to occur. It's not going to be to that level yet because she just doesn't have the time to be able to do those things. But it will be enhancing some duties she's already doing.
Okay, well, my concern would be, you know, somebody that's already working full-time adding more responsibilities and such, and kind of tough on people.
Yeah, that it can be.
Mr. Argus?
So you're okay with, in a sense, eliminating that position as it's read here, but you're looking at retraining this individual you have now to take on some of these responsibilities? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So then down the roadway, I would imagine then you're going to come back to us, which you should, with a new job title and a new salary range?
Yes, once we get to the place where all those predictive analytics and those other aspects that would actually make it a full-time job on its own and it makes sense for the city, we'd definitely come back with a new job description.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, if you've got someone you think can handle it, that's fine, but I think if they're going to handle it down the roadway, we need to look at a job description change with, you know, the salary to be commenced with it.
And in this, education-wise, is there, would we need an item and a budget for that? Or it comes out of your budget?
There is, and we've looked at some of the schools. Some of them are in Denver, and they're not going to be terribly expensive, but they would fit into our existing training budget.
Okay, good. Ms. Smith?
Um, I just, while you're here, chief, Harvey, I just wanted to say thank you for last week for the operation that was done at Red Park. And I think there were a lot of community support to see that there's some proactive measures being taken to help our kids who are at risk with exposure to drug use and abuse and the adults that are taking advantage of them there. And so we really appreciate the operation that was done so well last week. And the other one, I just thought this was kind of interesting. I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I thought it was kind of interesting, the dichotomy of the physical and mental requirements for this position, to sit and talk here and see and potentially be exposed to explosives and toxins and lethal dangers. So I thought, I don't know, I saw a little humor in that, but I guess it's not very humorous. Sorry.
She thought that was interesting. Okay.
Any other questions, Mayor?
No, thank you, chief. We appreciate it. So do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Mr. Meisner?
I just have a question. I already kind of confirmed this, but I guess it confuses me as to why, what I assume is to be a request in our potential new Black Hills agreement, that Black Hills would install any streetlight with the latest technology. But as I understand it, the streetlights we installed on Greenway Circle are not of the latest technology, and that seems to confuse me.
Could that fall under the existing franchise agreement? The proposed agreement hasn't been finalized and hasn't been adopted, so this is the standard there.
But we're buying them, aren't we?
Yep. We're going to check with Adam about that.
Well, we spent $4,188.
Adam is approaching the microphone as we speak.
Him and I already chatted, but I'm just telling you, it didn't make any sense why we wouldn't buy the latest technology, and I'm sure there's a reason.
Because it's not an option now. They're not going to maintain that type of equipment under the current agreement. So the only LEDs that exist in town are the ones that we own. So these are, we pay for the installation, they maintain them. So that'd be why.
So these are.
So we have to pick off the list of lights they have available.
Okay.
I mean, the alternative is to delay installation until we have the new franchise agreement with language that would specify the better technology, so we're open to that. It's probably a question of six months.
I mean, if we're putting in $4,000 with the lights, it would seem like we would put in the latest technology.
Well, that's not really what you're, I mean, the actual fixture is not the expensive part. So, I mean, you're paying for the pole, there's underground power at this location, so, I mean, whether the service is there or not, they can switch out the fixture at some future date. I mean, that's what we did downtown is we converted old fixtures. But you won't get LED lights for some time.
Because?
Because we don't have a current arrangement for that.
With Black Hills you're talking about?
Yeah.
But again, we're not that far removed from a new arrangement. And as you well know, the franchise agreement has expired and there's a nine-month clock ticking. And hopefully, this will get resolved by the springtime, and whatever action you take needs to be validated in a special election. So again, I think we're at most looking at six months from now. We could proceed and then simply change out the light fixture at that time or just wait and do it all at once. It's your prerogative.
That's a pretty dark area over there, and I think even a candle would be welcomed.
Candles were cheap.
On a 20-foot hole.
I mean, we're paying for the power on that, which is substantial. Is that not correct?
Our power bill's around $200,000 a year for all the lights.
Well, that's $200,000 we could do with something else.
Two or three bucks a month or something like that per light.
Chloe, we're youth proponents of LEDs, so whatever you want to do, we could proceed and then change out the fixture when we have that opportunity with the new franchise agreement or just wait till the new franchise agreement. We're prepared to do either one. But we understand your point is quite valid.
Whatever the flavor of council.
I think you ought to go forward. The majority, lion's share of all that expense is for that structure itself. And Tony's right, they could switch that bulb out to LED, but we need to get a light there now as quick as we can, in my opinion.
Yes, we do. It's very dark. It's three blocks and one streetlight. A lot of vandalism.
It's not the only dark block in town.
No.
Next subject.
Yes, sir.
Corey, Item A is a document that I generated. Do I need to recuse myself from that or am I okay?
I don't see any financial or pecuniary interest in that, so I wouldn't think so, no.
Ms. Smith?
I just have a clarification question for Items B and C on the new deputy finance director and the new accounting manager job description.
Yes.
Tony, you had mentioned in one of our meetings before and Harry that there's going to be possibly some restructuring where there'd be one person who'd do accounts payable and another one who'd do accounts receivable. Is that still on the table or is this a replacement of that?
This is part of Harry's overall plan to provide for an efficient and effective department now and in the future. The first position clearly is to groom someone to be the future finance director. It's very difficult to replace someone with Harry's capabilities and experiences and 20 years of knowledge of the city. We don't take that lightly, so we'd like to groom someone for that over the course of several years. The other positions is to restructure the departments so we might be able to achieve some staff savings and then award people with more responsibility, slightly higher pay, but have a net savings to the entire city through that process.
Okay, thank you.
Can we clone Harry?
I agree with you.
You know, we'll just clone about two or three of him.
It's at least two years, right, Harry? Since that's a term, my term.
Let's make it three, four.
Okay, all right, we're getting.
His wife has told us 10.
All right, poor guy. We're getting a little field here. So is that the end of the additions and corrections? Could I ask for a motion from council on a second? Ms. Argus?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with regards to the removal, though, of Item D, which the chief is willing to let that one go and retrain somebody else so he'll come back later.
What?
Well, actually, this position will do exactly what you're asking for. We're taking an existing administrative position and awarding it with additional responsibilities for crime analysis, and it will reflect both an expansion of the job itself and a slight increase in pay.
So therefore not removing it.
Is that okay for Ms. Argus? Just leave it there. Okay, we're going to leave it on the agenda then. All right, do I have a second? Mr. Gill, second. Would you, are there any discussion on that motion?
Just to be clear, we're approving the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
Councilmember Hockes?
No, I don't think we're approving it as it sits because if we are, then we're going to head and allow the crime analysis job position.
Yes.
My feeling is this, like I said, he's got someone that he can train that's doing a job now that has a salary range. That person needs to be qualified, and then once it's qualified, then that person can come back with a new job description, which is going to be different than the one she has now. And at that time, a salary range will be established.
But she's already doing the job.
She's not doing the whole job that this position requires. She's going to get training for it, okay?
But we already opened the position so that when she's trained, she can take it.
But she needs to be trained first of all, okay? I'm not going to say that she won't qualify, but she needs to be trained ahead of time.
But the position isn't being a specific position open for a specific individual.
If we approve it the way it is, it's going to be specific to that title.
Right.
Okay? And we can't do that right now until she is qualified.
We have other positions open that we're waiting for people to fill. Do we go and close all of the open positions that we have now until somebody wants to?
I'm talking about this position. If we go other positions that we need to look at, that's a different story. But we're talking about this one here. I'm not trying to take anything away from the individual that's there. I'm just saying she has a salary right now. When she gets qualified, then she'll go ahead and get the increased salary.
Then we'll have to go through this again and open a position for her.
Here, let me ask a question of the chief.
Go ahead.
Maybe it'll kind of cover it both ways. This new job description falls in salary range 57, which has a salary dollar range from $42,800 to $57,900. What is the current salary range that the administrative assistant is in, and does it overlap this new salary range?
It does overlap. I don't know what the grade is. It's less, but it does overlap at some portions. Clearly, this would be a raise for this individual, and I think part, and I apologize, Councilman Hockes, I misunderstood what you were saying earlier. So part of the reason for presenting this job description in this way is that she's doing some of these functions already. So either she doesn't get compensated for what she's doing right now, clearly she needs some additional training as well to be as proficient as someone who's doing, let's say, analytical work for the Denver Police Department in a crime analysis unit. But she's doing some of these functions now. And all I'm asking is that we change the job description to reflect the work that she's doing so she's compensated for it and that it's actually reflected as part of the duties that she's currently performing. Because otherwise, she goes back to a senior clerk, which I think is actually her classification, and none of those descriptions that are in this current job description will be reflected. So in essence, she wouldn't, she'd be doing outside of her current job description. So again, I apologize for misunderstanding your question earlier.
And she would start at the minimum level of this range.
What's the maximum level?
If there's an overlap, I'm presuming she's already beyond the minimum level. But I guess maybe to address Frank's concerns, which I guess I understand, is that there is some salary adjustment to reflect the fact that she is indeed taking on additional responsibilities. When she completes the appropriate training to be classified truly as a crime analyst, there'd be an appropriate compensation to that new position. Does any of that make sense?
Yes. Can I try?
Sure.
Also, okay, we're creating a new position within the city, and then if we approve that position, then it is up to the city manager to fill that position. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And along with this.
And he does that with existing staff, that's fine, but I don't think it's in our responsibility to assign job descriptions to individual employees.
There are three new job descriptions here, one with the PD and two with our accounting department.
All we need to do is approve the job descriptions and let administration decide who fills them.
Who fills them and what they're paying.
We currently have a motion and a second, and I think there's a disagreement between the person who made the motion and the person who seconded it, and we either need to vote it down.
So does that help Frank?
Or.
Or amend the motion.
I don't want to take anything away from this individual. I'm just saying this, okay? And you're looking at the minimum of $42,000. I don't know what her, I'm just going to use this hypothetically. She's making $40,000. So we approve this, she's automatically, you're going to go to 42.
Well, and police chief said that she is not being currently.
That's the minimum. That's the minimum. She would have to.
We're doing a deputy finance director. We don't have one now.
I know that, but what I'm talking about, we're talking about an individual that's in a position that's going to assume other responsibilities, okay? And what I'm saying is this, is if she's making $40,000 right now and we approve this the way it sits, she's going to go automatically to 42 because that's the minimum.
Not until she fills the position.
That don't say nothing about filling the position.
Well, it doesn't say it on any of the other three. Do you want to go split here?
Well, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, Mr. Gill?
Just thinking, this position could be created and she could not, or he, whoever it is, could not get the salary benefits until they complete the training.
That's correct. So I would defer to the city administrator on this, but the process is essentially she's classified as a senior administrative clerk currently.
Right.
If we approve the job description, senior administrative clerk still exists within the city. She doesn't become crime analyst until we do a personnel action form that's approved by the city manager, then she would fulfill that.
And I don't think, I mean, I think maybe Frank, this might clear it up, that if she was only, or he, was only moved up to that position once they were qualified and had the training completed, does that make sense?
I withdraw my motion, so whoever, if somebody wants to make a new one, they can go.
Well, and why would you get the investment in the training if there isn't a job in the books to get to be promoted to? I mean, you'd need to have this job in the books to justify the expense to get trained for that position.
All right, we need to have a new.
Can I make a new motion?
Make a new motion.
All right, I will, Mayor, members of council, make the motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, Schumacher? Any discussion on that motion? That's what we got before. Roll call.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
No.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Approved by majority vote.
Okay, let's do number seven, ordinance number 40, series 2017. This is a second reading. It's reinstating a portion of.
Mayor?
What?
Administrator's.
Oh. I'm going to yield my time to the chief of police. He's going to give you an update as you asked on the text cell phone ordinance you recently passed.
Okay, I thought the two...
I thought this was the demonstration.
I, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut both of you short because I figured that you had already talked enough.
You're correct.
Sorry, chief.
Yeah, I've caused enough problems.
I'm in a no parking zone apparently, so, go ahead.
Okay. When council approved the ordinance, the texting and driving ordinance, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit beyond the thirty day time that we had originally discussed, but my folks were running into some issues and I wanted to make sure that we had adequately not only educated the public, but also had an opportunity to actually do specific targeted enforcement from a warning perspective for this specific ordinance. And if you look at your packets, there, the specific details of what we've done, both as a community outreach effort, by going on the radio, doing social media, I think we've done quite a bit to educate the public. And then on the enforcement side, we haven't had really anybody that's, other than my initial report, where I saw an individual next to me texting and driving and swerving, that actually has met the elements of the offense. I know there was a big concern about several people getting stopped. That hasn't happened because of the nexus between if you're an adult and you're texting and you're driving safely and responsible, that's not a violation of the ordinance. And so, we have witnessed quite a few and actually hand tabulated those folks that we ran into, but nobody actually violated the ordinance and received any kind of a written or verbal warning. So, we anticipate continuing to do the public outreach and education efforts and, you know, trying to do enforcement of the ordinance, but that was the results of our forty-four, roughly, campaign about notifying the public and doing enforcement efforts.
Thank you. Any questions in council?
Just a comment. I had talked to the chief. It seemed to me like we had an opportunity with the forty-seven drivers that we witnessed texting, whether we had the authority to stop them and just say, hey, be aware, and he tells me that that is not an option.
It is not. So, in order to actually stop someone per the Fourth Amendment, we have to have reasonable suspicion that they've committed the crime. And so, if they are using a cellphone, but they have not had the other nexus, then we don't have the authority under the Fourth Amendment to stop them.
Okay.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Everybody okay? Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
I'm not cutting anybody else off, am I? Good.
Keep it up, buddy.
Let's go back to ordinance number forty. Administrator's report, did you have a report first, Tony? Have you?
No.
I wore, I wore you out.
Sometimes it does work.
All right.
You can tell by the bandage on his hand.
All right, okay. Ordinance number forty, series two thousand seventeen, it's a second reading. This is reinstatement proportion of chapter seventeen point three zero, signs. Would you read my title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number forty, series of two thousand seventeen, and ordinance amending chapter seventeen point three zero of the City of Canyon City Municipal Code by the reinstatement of section seventeen point three zero point zero seven five entitled Comprehensive Sign Plan.
Okay. Could I have a motion, a second, from council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we, pardon me, approve ordinance number forty, series of two thousand seventeen on second reading.
Second.
Really has you all choked up, doesn't it?
Doesn't want me to talk.
With that exception, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing done, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Now, the next two years are gonna be different, right?
No.
No. All right. All right. So, I'm gonna open a public hearing. It's a public hearing for application for a special event liquor permit for Sons of Italy of Pueblo Community, at Pueblo Community College Fremont Campus and could have a report from the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is John Kuroci representing the organization, who has applied to this council for a special event liquor permit for December third between noon and five PM for a wine tasting event. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting the premises. This is one of many wine tasting events that the organization has conducted. This event will be similar to the other wine tasting events that they've conducted. Actual wine tasting will be a three hour event beginning at one PM. Heavy hors d'oeuvres will be served accompanying the wine. This event is being conducted as a fundraiser for the organization to continue the efforts to promote the positive values of the Italian culture and heritage. Only individuals aged twenty-one and up will be allowed to enter, where those under twenty-one will not. Volunteers from the organization will be checking IDs to ensure legal drinking age at the entry and will assist in patrolling with the perimeter of the event. Upon review of the application, the appropriate fee has been submitted, the diagram meets filing requirements, they have obtained permission to use the premises, and the organization is in good standing with the Secretary of State. So, with that, I would open it up to any questions you may have of the applicant.
Hi.
Go ahead.
I will do this unless Dennis wants to do this, is his last opportunity. Be the last one of you.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. John, welcome.
Thank you.
Are you familiar with Colorado Liquor Code?
I am.
Is there a copy of the Liquor Code on file with your organization?
Yes, there is.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
Probably around ten.
How will they be trained on the Liquor Code and liquor laws?
All of the folks that we have serve are either representatives with their, you know, with their establishment, the different distributors, and then all of those that are volunteering are tip certified in Canyon City.
Are you fully aware that you're responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization as well as future licensing?
Yes, I'm very aware.
Very aware. Good. Would you like to tell us more about your event?
Sure. We actually serve wine from two o'clock till four o'clock. We have great appetizers. As usual, we have an Italian chef, one of our members, that puts out the appetizers. We are featuring California wines and then several local wineries and establishments, Vino Salida, and then of course, the Abbey Wine, and hopefully we'll have a couple new ones this year, we're not sure yet. We encourage people to come and sample. We usually have up to thirty wines. Fortunately, nobody ever samples all of them. You can, I mean, if you would like, but that's not the goal. We usually have reds and whites and so people either like one or the other and it is, as Kathy mentioned, a fundraiser for us and we enjoy sharing that part of our Italian heritage with the community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Are tickets on sale now, or?
Tickets are on sale. I just happen to have some with me. No. Actually, I do. Tickets are twenty dollars in advance and twenty-five at the door. And with that, you get appetizers, sample whatever wines you want, and also you get to keep your little wine glass with Sons of Italy logo on it.
Okay. Are there any comments from the audience? Thank you, John.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, John.
I'm gonna close the public hearing, this time ask for a motion, a second. Ms. Meisner?
Mayor, council, I move that we approve the application for a special event liquor permit for Sons of Italy, Sons of Italy at the Pueblo Community College Fremont Campus on December third.
Second.
Second, Ms. Weed, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Now, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, and I notice a lot of folks in this room actually have attended several of these, so I appreciate that. And also, I appreciate Kathy's effort. She does a great job. She even calls and reminds me to be sure I show up here so that we can get it approved. Thank you.
I'm glad you made it, John.
Thanks, John.
So, do that for me, too. Thank you. By the way, while we're talking about that, is there any movement on what we had asked that maybe these people don't have to consistently come to hear way through our meeting? Can, won't Kathy be empowered to do that if they then?
Yes, clue this is a conspiracy between you and Mr. Meisner. But yeah, we've been working on that. The city attorney is working on consolidating both city code language as relates to this, but there's also a series of resolutions that should be in the code under the law. So, they're consolidating all that and we'll be bringing it to the first meeting in January.
Okay.
So, we apologize for the delay, but it turned out to be more work than we had anticipated because of the history of putting all the language in different areas of the city.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and they're sitting here now an hour, just now got what he was gonna get approved for anyway.
He likes to pit the nest.
But we didn't wanna hear about it. Okay.
Which we couldn't deny.
Nine A is a resolution number thirty-five for two thousand seventeen, adopting the two thousand eighteen budget. Could I have a report from city administrator?
Yes, Mayor and council, and to the public, let me give you just a very brief overview of the two thousand eighteen budget. The budget is balanced and prudent at thirty-one point one million. This represents a nine million or twenty-two percent reduction over two thousand seventeen. That's largely for, because of the two A projects. As you know, the council took it upon itself to what I would call surge and accelerate those improvements this year. We'll be doing about nine million dollars of both road and waterline work this fiscal year. Next year, we'll go to a pay-as-you-go system where as the revenue is received, we'll build roads. So, we're building about three and a half million dollars with the roads and about a million dollars worth of waterline improvement. So, that's four and a half million compared to nine this year. So, that represents significant reason for the reduction. Also, you had a surge of activity at Centennial Park this year with the splash pad, the bathrooms, the playground equipment that was unprecedented as far as improvements at that park for this year. I think they'll all be well received. Next year, the amount of investment will decline because you're only gonna be focused on phase two of that master plan, which will include some parking improvements, roadway improvements, and the pavilion, which we're working in concert with Rotary Club on. So, that'll be nicely done. Again, the water fund, there was a reduction there of almost over a million dollars because instead of doing two million dollars worth of waterline work as we did this year, we'll only do a million. And then the final difference is the self-insurance fund. As you know, with the withdrawal of both the fire and sanitation district, that's gonna represent about a one point three million dollar reduction in both expenses and premiums. Overall, the budget reflects, I think, the council's strategic plan and what we heard in both the two thousand sixteen, two seven, two thousand seventeen citizen survey, and that is, people wanted to focus on the following. First, economic development. People want more jobs, more sales, if you're retailer, restaurateur, more prosperity. Only twenty-three percent of the public believes our current financial health is positive. It's extremely low. Only twenty-six percent believe that the downtown is economically vibrant. That is also quite low. So, we wanna put an emphasis on economic development. Public safety, that's something we don't wanna take for granted. We have a very capable police department with a reasonably low uniform crime rate compared to other communities, not only in Colorado, but the country. We wanna maintain that. We don't wanna take that for granted. Infrastructure, there's been a significant focus by this council on enhancing the quality of the community through infrastructure improvements. The two A street projects are one example of that, but also in parks and in utilities are other examples. One area that we're still amiss is stormwater. Only twenty-four percent of the public believes we're doing an effective job dealing with stormwater to correct because we haven't had the assets to make the capital improvements to improve our stormwater conveyance system. That's something that this council and the future council clearly are going to have to address, and that's part of the rate review we're looking at right now. We've had insufficient revenues to deal with really getting ahead of the problem. We've really just dealt with operations and maintenance of the current system. Clearly, that's not adequate as we see our roads flooding and irrigation ditches taking on water that they shouldn't. The built environment, about forty-four percent of the public feels that's positive. We have less direct impact on that because that's more the, the appearance, the impressions that people get coming to the community, but we recognize that, you know, people won't really look at a community very seriously, whether it's on a residential basis or an economic basis, unless they're excited about what they're looking at. So, we feel that we need to make some strides in making improvements to our overall appearance. For example, the, the wayfinding signage is one way of doing that, improving signage codes. You just dealt with the trash ordinance. These are all incremental things that we hope that will improve the physical environment. Community investments, this year we've scheduled eleven point five million dollars with capital investments. So, almost one-third of this budget is making capital improvements to the community. And then, of course, we wanna continue to ensure that we have the trust of the public and we're accountable, so we do things like the citizen survey, employee survey, making ourselves transparent so the public can see what we're doing and feel comfortable. The core of the budget in the general government, where the bulk of our funds are spent, is focused on police first. One-third of our general, general fund budget is for police services. And the second largest area is public work, so they represent combined almost fifty percent of our expenditures in our core services. And then economic development, we wanna continue to press with that, with the hiring of Ryan. I think we're seeing some strides here and where, for example, last year we did roughly eleven million dollars worth of new building permit activity. Already, year-to-date, we're not finished, we're above twenty-two million. So, we've doubled the amount of economic activity as far as just building, both residential and commercial. So, we wanna continue to spur that along. Overall, the big focus again is capital, and these are some of the large capital investments we'll be making. Again, almost four and a half million dollars on two A projects. We'll do roughly three center lane miles of road, where this year it'll be closer to seven. We'll do four hundred thousand dollars in road resurfacing, the chip and seal, cause that ensures that the roads maintain their viability so we don't have to reconstruct them down the road. We will pave eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of current gravels or dirt roads into paved roads. We still, in this day and age, have dirt and gravel roads in this city, so we wanna continue to address that. We'll have the South Fourth Viaduct on our list this year. We've been trying to get that project completed the last several years for bidding purposes. We haven't achieved that. This year, we now have a bid from Kiowit to get that project done for six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. I mentioned the wayfinding monument signage and the signage itself, that will be budgeted for four hundred thousand dollars. I think that will go a long way to make us more appealing, but also assist not only residents, but equally importantly, visitors in finding key treasures and assets of the community. For example, right now, there's not one sign on US fifty directing you to the Arkansas River Trail, which is an absolute gem, and there's not one sign that directs you to that location. So, those type of things we'll be doing. Centennial Park, I mentioned, phase two will be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That'll mainly be the parking, the recirculation of the road, and I think the pavilion's gonna be a big plus for that part. Arkansas River Trail beautification, both in the river, will make recreational improvements to make it more attractive for kayaking and rafting and hopefully for future special events, and also in cleaning up the embankments adjacent to the river, making them more attractive. You're about to, to adopt the Arkansas River Corridor Plan. That plan will go a long way between first and fourth in particular to revitalize that corridor, but also revitalize the economy in that corridor. I mean, there's prospects here for hotels, retails, restaurants in that sector of the Arkansas River, similar to what you see in Salida or Buena Vista, which have been huge successes in those two communities. So, we're not far away from achieving that. And then, we mentioned earlier this evening, there's a half million dollars scheduled for the Canyon City Middle School slash Main Street sidewalks and safety improvements. So, that's a step in the right direction. While we're making these investments, we wanna ensure that we're on good financial footing and health, and that best measure is, do we maintain a strong operating reserve, that rainy day fund, especially given the fact in our general fund, eighty-two percent of our revenue comes from the sales tax. That's incredibly high. The good news, it's largely paid by visitors. The bad news, it's very volatile as we experienced through the recession. The first thing people cut out is, is spending on large goods and services or on vacation. So, we always have to have a more significant operating reserve than most communities. Most communities have sixty days of working capital or sixteen percent of their annual Most communities have sixty days of working capital or sixteen percent of their annual expenditures. You've adopted a policy that requires twenty to thirty percent. So that's a range of seventy-five to one hundred and ten days. That's prudent because of the nature of our revenue sources. We're not a property tax-driven community. That's what most communities rely upon. That's a stable source of income. That's just not us. The reality is, we have more volatility, and this ensures that. So in all funds, we have seven point four million dollars tucked away, or thirty-nine percent of our total expenditures for emergencies of fiscal savings. In the general fund, we have three point six million or thirty percent. That's at the high end of your requirements. On, on the water fund, we have one point three million or twenty-six percent, kind of the midpoint of where you want to be. And on the self-insurance fund, we have seven hundred and fifty thousand, less than the past because we now only are really insuring ourselves and not the fire district and the sand district, and that represents thirty-three percent. So we're in excellent shape as far as operating reserves. We've talked briefly about the water and stormwater fees. We won't go into detail here, but there's necessity to increase both those fees, not because we want to, we have to. Both the water fund requires additional rate increases to meet not only operating and maintenance requirements, but more importantly, the capital needs, especially driven by the two A project. We have to keep pace with the road improvements, and while those roads are dug up, we need to pre- replace these old waterlines. If we don't, then we have the additional expense down the road of tearing up brand-new roads to repair dated blighted waterlines. So it's very important we keep pace with our street improvements. On the stormwater side, we are far behind where we need to be. We effectively have to, at the minimum, double the rates just to be at a financial position to pay for operation and maintenance of the stormwater system. And that's not going to address that twenty-six percent that thing we're doing that is satisfied. That means three-quarters of the public is not satisfied with stormwater services. We've got to invest capital dollars, whether it's in retention detention ponds, more culverts, the types of things that Adam has a laundry list of sixty-two million dollars worth of improvements. We've got to start making headway on that list if we're going to turn the corner on stormwater. Finally, on the general fund, the only significant things we're doing is one new position. That's the senior plan to replace Terry, who's retiring in, in January, and a quarter position for our existing half PIO position, Kristy Gotham. There'll be a two percent performance pool to be shared throughout the city. There are, our merit increases are anywhere from zero to four percent. The average is two. We'll also adjust salary classifications on seventy-eight positions, because as you know, we did a salary survey of other comparable communities to us, communities that we believe we really compete against, whether it's Pueblo, Fountain, the County, Alamosa. These are communities that we're competing for good employees and retaining employees. Seventy-eight, seventy-eight of our positions aren't even at the minimum of the pay scale. And these are largely, half of those positions are in the police department. We've had historical turnover in police, almost one-third turnover. That is down to almost nothing. Now, we're almost fully staffed. We like to keep it that way. Once you get a good officer, we don't want to be training them for Fountain or Colorado Springs. We want to keep them here. But to do that, we need at least have a minimum level of salary. Same thing with our entry positions at the water utilities and the parks and the streets. We have a lot of turnover in those positions because they simply get stolen away by other competing communities that pay substantially more. This is just to get to the minimum. The other major area is our MTDs. We hoped that that funded this year, but that will take place probably early next year, and that will be revolutionary for the police department to have mobile data terminals like the rest of the world. And that's a, that's an expense of three hundred and twenty-one thousand. The chief should be recognized. He was able to capture a state grant for two hundred and five thousand dollars. He's going to pay for the bulk of that. So, so he paid for himself this year. Next year's another year. So in essence, that's kind of the broad overview of the two thousand eighteen budget. You know, prudent, but focused on capital improvements and basic necessities for the community.
Thank you, Tony. Okay. Any questions of council? Mr. Meisner.
Good job, Harry.
Thank you.
And Tony.
Harry did the heavy lifting, you can tell.
Yep, he did.
By and large, it's, it's a good budget.
Yep, it is. Okay. Hearing your scene.
I do have.
Ms. Smith, I'm so sorry.
Terry and Dina, maybe you'd have an answer for me on this. We, we had talked at length, maybe at the beginning of my term, about addressing abandoned homes and possibly demolishing some of those homes. Are we still moving forward on that? And under the built environment investment, it looks like we're doing seventy thousand dollars for property cleanup. Could that money be addressed towards that?
Yep. So the abandoned housing list is being updated constantly, and we're still planning on applying for grant monies. And since we didn't get to that in two thousand seventeen, a portion of those monies were pushed to two thousand eighteen, and that's in that property cleanup line item in the budget.
Okay, so we had money set aside to demolish, hopefully, a home or, or potentially three without grant money.
So we'll determine, so within that budget line item, we'll determine and split out, you know, there may still be one demolition that occurs. There may be some purchasing and, and fixing. There may be, and, and then a portion of that line item is still the basic property cleanup, abatement, weeds, et cetera, that we're doing on an annual basis. So we haven't really sat down and divided out in detail that line item yet for two thousand eighteen, but we'll do that.
If, if the council wishes, you know, we could recommend that you add to that, maybe double that, because as you know, we claw most of that money back. We have to upfront the money for these demolitions, and then through the lien process, working with our attorneys, that money eventually accrues back to the city. So you'll get it back, but there's a significant time to, to claw that back. But if we want to accelerate making these improvements, and I think the mayor has said it numerous times, just creating the chilling effect that we're serious, we want people to take care of their property, we encourage them to fix them up, but if they don't, we will be prepared to take them down if they represent a public nuisance and, and, and physical health and welfare threat to the community.
Mr. Go.
On this, how much, how has it been on recouping the money that we've spent so far in this last year?
Well, we had two major projects, and we're in the midst of recouping. We've recouped some money from one of them, and we've got a major bill on, on the second one that we're in the process of, of getting. We'll eventually get the money.
Okay, so this money is rolling fairly quickly in the grand scheme of things?
Yeah. But Ashley probably brings up a good point. It becomes a cash flow problem. If we've expended all, our money on some major cleanups, that means we don't get to cleanups for quite a while, or we do them in a very incremental fashion, like you can't get a lot done for seventy thousand dollars in a community where you have over seven thousand homes. And we have about, I believe, we have at least thirty-five properties that are candidates. And we've seen, simply by being assertive, that some people have taken it upon themselves who have been on that list to start making improvements. They know we're serious. These are homes that have been sitting out there blighted and rundown for if not years, decades, that are finally getting some due attention. So that alone is worth the effort.
Well, and I just want to make sure that we don't lose our momentum, so a lot of work had been put on that. Towards that, for example, we had the house on red that the woman is going to donate to the city for us to take care of, and has anything happened with that?
So again, on the list, we're working very closely with code enforcement, keeping that list up to date as possible. A lot of the, some of the challenges with some of the homes on the list is that they may be in, in probate. There are other circumstances where they're not as easy to turn over as we might hope. But there are a few homes where there are interested third parties actually looking into them independently. The city is providing as much information as we can, and they're doing their due diligence and working directly with the property owner, which is a great, you know, it's a win-win scenario. So there's a couple of houses like that that are in process right now.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we keep that, that on the target.
We did apply for a state grant. I don't know when we're going to hear from that.
I know that takes a long time. I don't know if the application's actually been turned in yet.
Again, it's a prerogative of the council if you'd like us to increase that amount of funding so we can be a little more assertive. We certainly can do that, because eventually, that money is returned to the city, so.
Well, there's just a couple of hall, I mean, we have a list of thirty-five, but there's probably about three, maybe four houses that really are really bad.
Yep. I personally went out about two weeks ago now with code enforcement on the most recent list, and we actually went and visited, I would say, ten of the key houses. And so there's definitely a priority list that's risen to the top that we're going to move forward with.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Adam, I have a question for you as well. I know we set aside money every year for replacing ditch crossings. We're anticipating hopefully doing a ditch crossing collaboratively with the county. My question is, in our history, when's the last time we have replaced a ditch crossing from the monies that have been set aside?
We did one in front of Councilman Gill's house. What was that, last winter?
Well, that's only after it fell in.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's what we do. I want to say, not this past winter, it was, it was last winter, I think, two thousand sixteen, I think.
Right, early, yeah.
Yeah.
But it actually failed, and then there was, it was rebuilt, and they didn't mess around when they did it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So we need more to fail.
Well, that's just too bad. We have to wait till they fail to get to them.
Work for Mark.
Any other questions?
That's right.
Could I have a motion and a second?
Oh, wait, I still have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Under economic development investments.
Yes.
We have a three hundred thousand dollars allotted for marketing and economic development. Is that the money that would have gone to the Royal Gorge?
Would have gone to match the lodging tax had it passed. We're holding it in place in the operating reserves, see what the council wants to do. You don't have to do anything now. That money's just sitting there, and if we work out a partnership with the county, that would be great. If not, then there's alternatives we'll share with you at the beginning of the year. But we hope, and ideally, we can work out a partnership with the county, because collectively, we could generate almost as much money together as the tax and, and your contribution would have generated this year. So we can get the ball rolling to stimulate, and this is one part of the economy that we can really make an immediate difference, and that is attracting visitors and tourists to our community, which generates significant restaurant, retail, recreation, destination, sales, which in turn provides jobs and millions of dollars in local city and county taxes. There's absolutely significant direct return on investment. That's why we were so excited about that tax opportunity. The public spoke, we have to listen, but there are other means to still stimulate that sector of our economy, because that return could be immediate.
Right, and so it's just earmarked for that possibility or Plan B, economic development in general? Okay.
Yep.
Like, well, are you done?
Yes. I was going to make a motion, but.
No, I was going to, just, just since that subject came up, there has been, I've heard varying comments on the, the future of the lodging tax and who's going to manage it. And I know that the mayor and, I think, Mr. Bandera, there has been some conversations with county commissioners, and I guess I'd be curious, kind of what is the sentiment that came out of those conversations and where, where are we headed?
I sense they're good. I think that they would like to do something as well, and they just needed some more time to look at alternatives. But I think it was extraordinarily positive.
Okay, great.
So.
It's good to hear.
We'll just do a follow-up. Sure. Very, very well. It was a good meeting. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion for Resolution Number Thirty-Five, Series of two thousand seventeen, and adopting the two thousand eighteen budget.
Second.
Any discussion of that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, then we're going to go to ordinance number thirty-nine, Series two thousand seventeen. This is the first reading. It's an ordinance appropriating sums of money for budget year two thousand eighteen. I will need three councilpeople to introduce. Mr. Hockes, Ms. Schumacher, and Mr. Weed, thank you. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number thirty-nine, Series of two thousand seventeen, and ordinance appropriating sums of money to various funds and spending agencies in the amounts and for the purpose as set forth below for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, for the twenty, we have a typo, two thousand eighteen budget year. We will note that typo, and I'll get that before it goes to publication.
Okay. Could I have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Schumacher?
Dennis.
I'll, I'll just leave the, every second to you. Mayor, members of council, make the motion to approve ordinance number thirty-nine, Series of two thousand eighteen on first reading.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? I will need a motion.
What did you just say?
I'm sorry. We need a motion, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, but he said thirty-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, Series of two thousand seventeen.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But it's for the two thousand eighteen budget.
Right.
That type of will be correct.
He said Series of seventeen.
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? And then would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, nine series of Resolution Number Thirty-Six, and this will be for the two thousand eighteen, for two thousand eighteen, which is the typo there. We'll correct that. Adopting the two.
No, still seventeen.
So I'm sorry, it is seventeen. I'm way ahead of myself. Sorry. Adopting the two thousand eighteen compensation plan, could I have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll try it again. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution, Resolution Number Thirty-Six of two thousand seventeen on first reading.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Gill. Mr. Gill, thank you. Could you call, call a roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, we're going to open a special review use accessory dwelling unit for five twenty Hamilton Road. We're going to open up the public hearing at this time. Could I have the staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, this is a public hearing for a special review use for an accessory dwelling unit. The applicant is Tim Cohen. The owners of the property are James and Kathleen Cohen. The address is at five twenty Hamilton Road. It's in the RL Rural Living Zone District. Public notice was published and the property was posted according to law. The Planning Commission considered this application at the regular meeting on October twenty-fifth. I have provided the meeting minutes and their advisory report in your staff packet. The commission recommended approval with conditions in a unanimous vote. Mr. Cohen and his family have made a request to establish an accessory dwelling unit on their four point six acre property on Hamilton Road. It is the, you heard an application in the summer that was very similar to this in that the applicant is requesting that the existing house, which is actually quite small, he has a, a large family, he wants to build, he wants to use the existing house as an accessory dwelling unit, create it as that, and then build another house on the property, which will be the principal structure. We did that for a property, like I said earlier, in the summer. It's very similar, and the same kinds of conditions are being suggested. It basically means there's a certain amount of coordination that has to happen as the, when the new house is built, it will get a certificate of occupancy, and at that time, the small house, the existing house, will get a certificate of compliance as an existing accessory dwelling unit. Mr. Cohen and his application meets all of the general requirements except for one, which is occupancy. He is not currently the owner of the property, but has expressed that he will be the owner of the property before this process is finished. And so we have included a condition that will require evidence of that so that he will be living on the property at least six months out of the year. In R one N R L, that is one of the requirements. I have included referral comments from the city engineer, the building official, the fire district, and the sanitation district. There are no other conditions if you'll look on page three, or actually, if you look on the advisory report from the Planning Commission. The conditions, and I'm just going to go through these very briefly with you, on page two of that advisory report, basically says that the, the existing house that will become The conditions, and I'm just gonna go through these very briefly with you, on page two of that advisory report, basically says that the, the existing house that will become the ADU will comply with all of the requirements of a particular section in the accessory dwelling unit regulations, and that they will get a certificate of compliance, and that the new house will also be issued a certificate of occupancy and will get a building permit. Two, basically states that all required building, electrical, and plumbing permits will be gotten, and that the construction and everything will be in compliance with the section for the existing dwelling unit. Number three is to requirements for the sanitation district and the fire district will be met. Number four is evidence of the transfer of the subject property to the new owner. Number five is a standard on material representations, and number six just clarifies that the existing single-family home will be, come the ADU, and that they have a specific amount of time in which to get the certificate of occupancy and compliance, which is basically 18 months. If you have any other questions, I can answer them for you if I can, and the applicant is here as well.
Could we have the applicant come forward? Call your name, please.
Tim Cohen.
Hi, Tim. Any questions to the applicant? Do you have any comments at this time, Mr. Cohen?
No. Just trying to go through the process, getting a place built down there.
You understand everything that has been gone over and comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Meisner?
I just have two clarifications. Where we have historically got in trouble with this council is approving things with conditions, and then, as we move along, for whatever reasons, legitimate or not, those conditions haven't been met. But specifically with item 16, it mentions that you're gonna achieve all this within 18 months. That's practical and doable?
I think it's practical and doable. It's on a floodplain. I have to get, I already had an elevation certificate done on the existing house at 520 Hamilton. The new one will be the same thing. We'll build it, build up above the floodplain and build a house.
So, are you doing modifications to the existing structure?
No.
So, but if you did, let me give this clear, if you did do modifications, then that would trigger him having to get up to floodplain elevation standards?
Uh, yes. He would have a floodplain development permit.
And the reason I didn't do that, it only allows to build half the square footage onto it, which that house is 698 square feet, so that's not much more square footage for a family of four.
I think it's actually the value. Adam can answer these very specific questions, but it has to do with the valuation of the property, and when you go over that, then you have to, am I correct, Adam?
He's shaking his head.
He's shaking his head.
Then you will have to be at the base level and may have to raise the, the floor level of the house. That's why he did his elevation certificate at the very beginning.
So he knew what he was up against.
Before he decided to add on to this house and make it his primary living.
But the elevation certificate, the, the, the rise in level has not been done at this point, is that correct?
He, he's not going to make any changes, and so he doesn't have to do anything. As long as nothing is changed, he can, that house can be used the way it is.
But to the new house, yes, it's gotta be built up to above floodplain.
Exactly.
So, in the wording on page two, item number three, it says that the applicant shall obtain a floodplain development permit for new structure and modifications to existing structure.
Well, that's if he was gonna make any.
That's just if they were to.
Right. And that could be in the future, for instance, if he decided after he built the house and he wanted to add on to the existing structure or the new ADU, the old house. He could do that, but he would have to have a floodplain development permit to do it.
Is there a chronological sequence of expectations in terms of completion of this?
Well, 18 months to get it all done, and then...
I understand that, but I don't want to be sitting here in 18 months with this gentleman building a new house that he never complied with the floodplain thing.
He can't get a building permit if he doesn't comply with...
Okay.
The flood, that, yeah, that, that will come at the time he gets his building permit, so he wouldn't be issued a building permit without it.
And you're, you're, you're gonna acquire this land?
I'll acquire this land if this goes through. If you guys okay it, and the reason this process was done, I tried to do this about 10 years ago, and the upgrades you guys wanted me to do, to do this, it wasn't feasible for a 22-year-old kid. I mean, I couldn't afford, no way, no shape, no how to do it, so this was a way around it. I will acquire that. My parents will sign it over if you guys approve it to build, but if not, no, it won't. It'll stay in their names.
What if he doesn't complete the project in 18 months?
Well, we had, we bumped up against this on another one, in that, that...
Really?
Yes. When we, at some point, we have to put some sort of a time limit on these. Sometimes it's a year, sometimes it's longer. In the last one, where the gentleman was constructing his ADU, we gave him a year. He really had a hard time finishing it in that time, and so what we did was to extend it for another six months, and I have used that kind of traditionally as we've gone through this process since that time. I would, I'm happy to give him even more time, so that we don't have to come back here and ask for special dispensation or something, so that he can get this finished. 24 months would be...
My preference would be to give him enough time that that's completed, so that we're not dealing with an extension, and an extension, and an extension, and more social media that says we're not trying to help people out.
I understand.
So if we need 24 months as a, as a black and white deadline, then we need, then we need to have 24 months, not 18 plus six plus six plus six.
That's fine with me. I'm not gonna complain about more time.
I'm pretty sure he wants to get to that new house.
We don't have an issue with that. Given the, given the other conditions here that, you know, limit his...
Would you like to see that 24 months?
Yeah, because I want it black and white.
Sure.
I mean, if we're not able to do it in 24 months, then we're gonna have a problem.
Yeah, and he is building another house, so.
Okay. How do we do that?
Thank you.
Does the council just go ahead and make that 24 months instead of 18, and go to...
Yeah, you'll amend the conditions.
Yep.
Add that to a condition. Let's do that. So we'll make it 24 months.
Thank you.
And I think your wife will probably pressure you to get it done in 18, right?
What's that?
Your wife will pressure you to get it done in 18.
Oh, yes.
I'm just guessing here, or your dad, I think.
So, your dad.
Yeah, your dad.
Probably his wife. They're living in 600 square feet.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
Yeah.
Instead of there.
Are there any comments from the audience?
Now's your chance, Dad.
Okay. Is there any further, any further discussion? Mr. Cohen? You may stand up and guess.
You aren't gonna catch him on this. It's a public hearing.
What?
It needs to be in the microphone.
I can't. Go ahead. You need to be at the microphone, Doug.
Doug Cohen, 1102 Vine Street. Carrie and I have discussed this already, and I believe her, but she's leaving the position, so I'd like it on record on, I don't know if you got the paperwork, that we were also seeking a zone change. We're not.
What was that?
Okay, that was, that was on the posting, and it was the, it was the affidavit for the posting. That was a typo, so no, they are not seeking a zone change of any kind.
Nope.
RL is gonna stay.
I didn't see anything on that, anyway. We didn't get in our packet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I'm gonna close with her, Carrie. And then I'm gonna, ordinance number 41, Series 2017, I will need three to introduce. Is that what I'm doing right? Okay, three to introduce. Mr. Schumacher, Ms. Hockes, and Mr. Meisner. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for Ordinance Number 41, Series of 2017, an ordinance amending section 17.24.050 of the municipal code to add there to a new subsection identifying a certain land use permitted only by special review in accessory dwelling unit located at 520 Hamilton Road.
Could I have a motion, a second?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 41, 2017, with the amendment to extend the building to 24 months.
Okay.
Second.
Second, Ms. Hockes, thank you. Call a roll, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck with that. Thank you.
Good luck. Doug, get to work.
11A, public hearing for a zone change, Lot 1, Oasis New Horizons subdivision. I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Could I have the staff report from the city planner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a zone change request for Lot 1 of the Oasis New Horizons subdivision exemption, more commonly known as 1261 Park Avenue. It is currently dual-zoned, MH1 and R2, and the request is for R3, high-density residential. Public notice was published and the property was posted as required by law. The planning commission considered this application also at their regular meeting on October 25th. Meeting minutes and their advisory report is in your packet with further details. The commission recommended approval of the zone change with a staff recommended condition. This was also a unanimous vote. Everyone also on the commission was present, so there were seven members at that planning commission hearing, just to let you know that. The Oasis Mobile Home Park was originally developed in the county many years ago, and it, over time, multiple single-family homes were built on the property. It's over seven acres. There was a mobile home park established there, and there were originally about six parcels. There were some also other uses on the property from a long time ago. One of the outbuildings there had been used as a gas station, I understand. New Horizons purchased the property in about 2012, and at that time, there were, are, currently, when we started to talk to them about this, 27 mobile home spaces, multiple single-family homes, several outbuildings. Surrounding zoning is R2 and MH1 to the west, but that does not contain a mobile home park either, but it is R, MH1. R3 zoning is not adjacent, but it is in the neighborhood within 200 feet of this parcel, and also to the east. All of the surrounding uses, land uses are residential, single-family, and duplex development. A small portion of this lot that is being considered for rezoning is also Zone 2, and that is a result of the recent subdivision, and I'll get into that in, in just a minute. There have, the city started to talk to New Horizons several years ago, before I arrived in the city, and we have had ongoing conversations with the ministry about their plans for the property, and for, for that matter, for the other properties that they own in the city. And we have identified some issues over time on this particular piece of land or pieces of land. The mobile home park is, was located on two separate parcels. There were mixed residential use types on individual parcels. There are structures that were encroaching over lot lines. There are outbuildings that they have that they have talked about using for other purposes that are not allowed within MH1. There are single-family homes and parcels that don't have direct access to a right-of-way. There were boundary discrepancies based on an old survey that may or may not have been done correctly, but there was a court decree that got laid on top of these properties in this area, and actually kind of resolved that. And then the mobile home park area that had an address or an entrance on Jewett has never complied with addressing norms in the city. So as we have talked to them about this, we laid out some plans for them in a way to encourage them to bring the property into conformance. Now, I will say that it may be that conformance, we may not achieve it entirely throughout this property, but we're working towards it. We laid out a plan for them, which was to complete a subdivision process, and in that way, it would get the mobile home park all on its own property. It would eliminate the boundary discrepancies when you go through the subdivision process. And it also eliminated the encroachments when we changed the lot lines. We did ask them to readdress the mobile homes, and we did that in, completed that in September, and then the final thing, final two things, one was to rezone Lot 1, and then also, after they take a pause after this process, hopefully, they will come in with a PUD or some other kind of comprehensive plan that the city may approve, that would allow them to legalize all of the rest of the structures and uses on this property. And if I could, I'd like to point you to the map in your... And I think the second map would probably, well, both of them would work, but let's go to the second one where it says improvements exhibit, and it shows some red boxes. Do you see that? Let me just go through this kind of quickly with you. So the red hatched area, this is the lot that is Lot 1, that the request is to rezone. The red boxes actually represent single-family homes. The yellow boxes represent other outbuildings, and I think I forgot one in there to highlight. And if you look in the southeast corner, you'll see a little box where part of it is outlined in black and part of it is in white. That's the actual part that, because of the lot line changes that we did through the subdivision exemption process, that little box there in the lower left-hand corner of that property is actually R2 now. The rest of the hatched area is MH1. So we are hoping that this step will get them closer to some of the uses they might like to have on their property. It's not necessarily going to give them free rein for anything that might happen on R3, because, but it may allow them some other uses. What they really need to do is come in after the fact here and provide a PUD, so that they can provide access to all of these structures as it is required. And then perhaps develop a plan that will allow them to have multiple types of uses, you know, that they, I, they do a lot of daycare. They've also talked about doing a dormitory-type situation for housing. This property might be able to accommodate that for them, but it would require a PUD in order to do that. So that, that is our, that was our plan. During this process also, we identified as a condition, conforming and non-conforming. So their largest home is the conforming use. It's a single-family home. Everything else is considered non-conforming, and then they may develop or repair or do whatever they need to do based on those designations. And that's why that condition or clarification is in the advisory report and was suggested by staff.
So, non-conforming but grandfathered?
Yes.
Non-conforming but grandfathered.
Well, non-conforming...
MH1 is a relatively new zoning designation, and I'm guessing everything that's on this property's been there longer than the MH1 designation.
And actually, this property was originally, I'm sure all of these houses were developed in the county, when this was still in the county. Grandfathering assumes that one, I mean, it would never be a conforming, and you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, Corey... Corey, but anyone who builds a house across a lot line is not, is not building a conforming structure.
Correct.
So it couldn't be grandfathered.
I don't know what the term grandfathering means.
Yeah.
That's not a term that I'm familiar with. I know what people refer to it as, but it is a legal non-conforming use.
It is.
That, that's what grandfathering means. That is a use that, when the ordinance is adopted, was existing as of the date of the ordinance, cannot be expanded.
It can't be expanded.
The non-conformity cannot be expanded.
But it can be improved.
Correct.
Right. So, for instance, let's just, I'll give you a, for instance, they have asked that the large house, that just, the big red box, they would like to remodel that. We've identified that as the conforming structure, and they can, they're going to apply for a building permit to remodel that house. They can do that. If they wanted to take one of the smaller, single-family homes and do an addition to it, they would not be able to do it, because it's a not, those are non-conforming structures, and they can't enlarge them. They could make repairs to them.
Sure, okay.
That kind of thing.
Yeah. Now, just for clarification, this little black and white box on the lower, on the southwest corner?
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
Southeast, southwest corner.
A separate parcel, or is that part of this parcel?
It is now, it's part of this parcel.
And, did it used to be part of a different parcel?
It did. It used to be part of the parcel to the south, which is R-two.
Yes, and so, did we do an adminis, a lot line adjustment?
Yes, we did a lot line adjustment.
Okay.
Now, the lot line adjustment has not, this is, this map is from the county records, and they haven't recorded that yet.
Okay.
So.
All right.
So are we changing that, Dennis?
So what we're asking for is a change to R-three and, R-three from M-H one and R-two.
Right.
Because R-two is existing on this lot.
The two existing zoning designations will go away, and the entire parcel, including that little corner piece, will all be, or will be R-three.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, no, that makes sense to me.
Including the little block.
Now, let me go through, may, okay, go ahead.
Including that little block?
Yes, that little block will be R-three as well.
Yeah, that's part of the one parcel now. That's what my confusion was.
That's R-two, you're gonna go to R-three.
Mr. Gill.
Ms. Bernith, we got a letter laying here as we came in this evening, dated August eleventh of two thousand and seventeen. Have the issues in this been addressed or worked out, or what?
Yes, they have.
To everybody's liking?
As far as I understand, that is correct. I have been in contact with Mrs. Cristelli for a few months now.
Okay.
And she, I do believe, and I think that Bill Lapp, who is here representing New Horizons, can also fill you in on the last bit of this. There was also, and I'll direct you to your packet, there was a letter from me on August sixteenth that explained kind of the gap situation. She was concerned that the gap affected her property. She needed some confidence as she, as this moved forward, that it was being taken care of. I believe that New Horizons has done that for her, and I do believe that what they're gonna be doing, if they haven't already done so, is to do a quitclaim deed for those gap pieces that occur on her property, which is just to the west.
What was the purpose of bringing these letters to us tonight? That just raises a concern for me, because these were just provided to us this evening, but yet, I mean, there's some very, very clear questions on the other owner's part.
Right.
But what was the importance of having us have this this evening?
The reason for that is that that letter was delivered to you during that time, back in August. You didn't see that until this came forward to you.
Okay.
So it was expressing a concern in August that does not exist now.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that it's been resolved, and there's not gonna be a problem with, with the rest of this. I mean, New Horizons does wonderful things for our community, and I understand what they're trying to do up there, and I think it's absolutely perfect.
Yes.
But yet, I don't wanna see something like that go through if there's animosities or, you know, or what we read in this letter are still out there, not resolved.
Well, I would definitely, I would, at this point, because I don't, I haven't talked to Ms. Cristelli in a little while, it might be a good idea for Bill Lapp to address that with you guys before we move forward on this.
Can we have Mr. Lapp come up forward?
I would like to add one thing before...
Please, go ahead, head.
Bill speaks.
He's walking slow.
And that is, and I do understand Ms. Cristelli's concerns, and obviously, New Horizons does as well, but this rezoning doesn't have any bearing on that, on those issues that she has on her property, if they exist at all.
Okay, nothing on the rezoning will affect any property that she has?
No, no, it does not. So.
Yes, but, but the concerns that she did have, we did, we were able to resolve them. We did the quitclaim deed, what you guys recommended, and that's all, all taken care of.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Well, I'm just a little bit curious, what, what is your kind of vision for the future for those properties you're looking forward?
We actually don't really know yet. We've been working with Terry as far as what we can do, and she recommended that we just take a pause and, and kind of go over it, see what we wanna do. Of course, one of the biggest concerns for us is, is the cost, if we do continue forward, like, do we have to put streets in and all that, and that will have a huge bearing on, on what, you know, if we will proceed with, with developing it further.
Well, what staff is recommending makes sense, is to go to a PUD. Then, that's your stuff.
Yes.
Yeah, those improvements would be at their cost.
Their cost.
Right.
Yeah, and your, sure.
And there are ways around that that don't, I mean, they could be private drives or something like that, that might connect all of these structures. That's a plan that needs to come forward.
Yeah.
To look at, so.
You, you understand that, of course.
We do, and of course, there again, that is a concern for us, is, of course, the cost, and, and one thing I wanna remind you all of is, is all these non-conformings were there when we purchased the property, and so, being aware of that, we are, you know, working very hard to try to get them into conforming. And so, moving forward to whether, you know, we can continue that process, of course, is working closely with, with whoever's involved in that, and trying to make a solution for, so that everything is conforming.
Yeah, I think we understand that, don't we?
No.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any comments from the audience? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, thank you, Terry, and move on to ordinance number forty-two, series two thousand and seventeen. This is the first reading. I need three to introduce, Mr. Weed, Schumacher, Mr. Gill, thank you. Would you read by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number forty-two, series of two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance rezoning certain real property within the city of Canyon City, Colorado, Lot One, Oasis New Horizons subdivision exemption.
We have a motion second from council. Mr. Weed?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, make motion to approve ordinance number forty-two, series of two thousand and seventeen on first reading.
Second.
Mr. Schumacher, second. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Anyone, you call a roll, please.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, we're gonna move on to ordinance number forty-three, series two thousand and seventeen. This is the first reading. It says banning electric, personal-assisted mobile devices. I will need three to introduce. I will need three to introduce, Mr. Smith. Smith. Ms. Hockes. Mr. Gill. Would you read a title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number forty-three, series of two thousand and seventeen, and ordinance amending chapters nine point four-four, nine point four-six, and ten point zero-four point one-five-five of the Canyon City Municipal Code prohibiting the operation of electricity, electrical-assisted bicycle segways and similar modes of transportation in public parks, on recreational trails, and city sidewalks.
Okay, staff report from city administrator.
Just briefly, Mayor, 'cause I know the council has spent quite a bit of time on this, but currently, this municipal code prohibits the use of motorized vehicles in city parks and trails. In addition, it prohibits bicycles and skateboards on the sidewalks of the downtown. There are accommodations under the American Disabilities Act for people to use motorized or self-propelled vehicles, but not for anyone that is not qualified under ADA. What we're proposing with this new ordinance is segways for non-ADA purposes would be permitted on our trails and parks as long as they were dismounted. That's because we have easement agreements from McKenzie all the way to Tunnel Drive that prohibit the use of motorized equipment. We would jeopardize the underpinnings of that entire trail if we violated those easements agreements. They would everyone from the Royal Gorge, I mean, excuse me, from the Royal Gorge Railroad to Black Hills Properties, to individuals that have granted easement rights to create that trail, so we don't want to in any way jeopardize the public's use of that by violating those agreements. On the other hand, e-bikes could be permitted as long as they were not engaged, 'cause they still function as a bicycle unless their electric motors are engaged. So technically, they're a bicycle as long as they're disengaged, so we're proposing that they be permitted. We will use the police to routinely monitor activity on the trail to make sure that people aren't in violation of that, and the fines start at fifty dollars, and with multiple fines, they go to a hundred, so, in a nutshell, that's what we're proposing.
Okay, we have Gary Howard. Would you like to address the council?
Three minutes.
I'm Gary Howard, owner of Canyon City Segway Tours, and, well, first of all, I would just like to say, you guys have a really hard job to come here and sort through all this stuff, week after week after week, so, this is my second meeting here, and I don't know how you guys do it week after week, so thanks for hearing my concerns on this topic. But I'm just a small business, and I'm trying to attract tourists to our community, as Tony mentioned earlier, that is vital to our community, and, and so, this ordinance makes it very difficult for me to operate my business in a, in a way that I think I could be successful. I want to bring tourists to our community to show off the gems that we have. And these segways, I brought one here as a prop, and they, they are designed to operate safely amongst citizens and pedestrians and things of that nature. So, with that being said, I would like to ask permission from the mayor if I could just quickly demonstrate how agile and safe these units are.
I think you can, but I think we'd like to be able to see if that could be operated dismounted.
That, well, that, I guess that is the topic. Operating it dismounted would be very difficult, like crossing that bridge. These are designed to be ridden.
Right.
Not, not operated from the side, so, so to dismount this, you would have to power it down, and so, like, my customers would have to drag the segway up the ramp, across the bridge, pull it down the ramp, and then we'd have to repower the segway and then take off from that point. So, a lot of the customers, I don't think, would have even the physical ability to do that for that type of distance.
Does it freewill?
What's that?
Does it freewill?
No, not when it's not mounted.
So, I'm not familiar with them, so you would have to school me on that. So, what about driving it up to the bridge? The, the idea is that we have agreements that they're not supposed to have powered vehicles on there. We don't wanna break that agreement. And so, if we could find a method, and I think the reasoning was, if you could get it to the bridge and walk it across, then get off and get on the streets and go, 'cause you wanna get to Robinson Mansion. That's what our thinking was.
Right. I'm just trying to find a, a common solution that makes everybody happy.
But could you, if you got it up to the bridge, could you walk it across the bridge and then get it down as quickly to the, to the paved street?
Well, that, that's the thing. I, with power, you can't just walk it across. It won't just stand there and, and gracefully walk across the bridge and back down. It won't operate like that with you just standing beside it, no. You would have to power it down and grab it by the handlebars and literally drag it up, up the ramp and across the bridge. That's about the only way I know that, that that could be done.
Can you, can you demonstrate that?
While he's powering this down, I got a question. This ordinance isn't outlining those because they're already outlawed, is that correct?
I don't quite understand the question. What do you mean by outlawed?
This, what we're, what, this ordinance that we're doing is not outlining segways on, on, on car, on paths because they're already outlawed.
True, any motorized equipment, not just segways, any.
So we're, we're not outlining anything.
This would be allowing them with this condition.
And this, the only thing we're doing with this ordinance is allowing the segways on the cart path over the bridge as it is right there. That's the only thing we're doing with this, four pages. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, and recognizing the ADA allowance.
Right. And that's pre-existing, that's under federal law, so that already exists. That's a right that everyone has access to, and I've talked and spoken to people that actually have them for ADA purposes and let them know, they can operate them on our trails. It's governed by the federal law.
To the point, do you, if you could ride that up to the bridge and do just like that, across the bridge, and write it down and get on the street in the park and go, not on the trails, you can't be on the trails.
Ashley, pull it.
Right, yeah, at this point, I'm not asking to take it on the trails, but to cross the bridge is like one of the only safe places, and, and I know from tours I've done in the past, I don't think all the people on the tour would have the physical ability to grab this and drag it up that ramp, 'cause I, I went there just before the meeting tonight.
But, but Gary, what I'm saying is, is you would get to the bridge, so you would already be there. All you're doing is flatly walking across, walking it across a pedestrian bridge, get on it, get down to the road, and go.
Right, but there, there's a long ramp to go up to the bridge.
Be able to go up the ramp.
Oh, oh, we would be able to go up, up the ramp.
You'd have to push it.
But that's not part of the trail. But the ramp's not necessarily part of the trail, that's owned by the city.
Yeah, it, it, it's part of the easement from the Royal Gorge train. It's covered under that easement. You cannot have any motorized vehicle on it. Same is true of the pedestrian bridge down at the end of Riverside as you get towards the Community College. That's an easement granted by Black Hills, and that too prohibits the use of any motorized vehicles across that easement.
Once again, these are not considered motorized vehicles by the federal government.
There's a motor on that thing.
But the federal government doesn't recognize it as a motorized vehicle.
Yeah, but we're, we're dealing with our ordinance, not the federal government, okay?
Yeah, I'm just trying to kind, find a common solution.
Now, wait a minute, the, you're talking about crossing the pedestrian bridge that parallels the Fourth Street Bridge.
The Trust Bridge.
Yes, yes.
Is, that's not in the railroad easement?
It's in their agreement that that bridge is part of that easement, just as the bridge at the other end is part of the Black Hills easement.
I don't know.
It's part of the trail system, I'd have to, I might go back and look, but it's all part of the trail system. It's not independent. That is a connection.
No, that, that bridge can't possibly be in the railroad easement. That would make that easement three hundred feet wide. I mean, that bridge is a long ways from the railroad tracks.
Yes, I think it's not anywhere near the railroad track.
The, the railroad easement, depending on where you are, ranges from fifty to two hundred feet, and I'm pretty sure that bridge is at least two hundred feet.
I'm gonna say something here.
You do.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate you. Why don't we find out if that bridge is actually physically covered under an easement before we make a decision on this?
I mean, because it's like we're trying to... I think it was just proven that you can, you can get off that piece of machinery and take it across an area. You can dismount it. I mean, Ashley just showed us that.
Does any, does any other council member want to try?
How would you, you know how tall, how, what the ramp's like?
It goes like this.
How would you feel about pulling that up the ramp on either side?
Is that an ADA ramp?
Yeah.
Oh, it's looks like that.
What's the grade of that ramp?
It's better than, it's better.
Yeah. Yeah. It's an ADA ramp.
Yes.
I personally didn't find it super challenging, however, I would like to say that I do like to work out and lift weights, and I do a lot of push-ups.
You're not a normal subject, is it? And she duly noted that as she came back.
Do you need a demonstration? I'm sorry.
Well, since Frank and I are the oldest ones here, you wanna take a shot at it?
Where's the cameras?
Yeah.
It's on you now, Frank.
Yeah.
Frank used to run miles.
Jeffrey's a former marathoner.
First of all, Ben, just grab it, there you go.
Pull it or push it?
This is with one hand.
Now, push it.
Yeah. Not going up the ramp.
Because if I was like you with both, it becomes easier, okay? With one hand, I can still.
Looks like they're selling the vacuum there, Frank.
Well, you're good, you just lean it up.
Well, actually, the highest population uses a stick to hold it, but there can be the act. I mean, you got to make sure somebody gets to it.
Further discussion?
What's the average age of your customers?
They range from eleven, ten, eleven years old to seventy years old and everybody in between.
There's, we're not, I'm going to remind council, we're not outlawing these devices on the trails because they're already outlawed. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, all we're doing with this ordinance today is to say that you're going to be able to take that device on a trail, which that is a trail regardless of the right-of-way, because it is, in our opinion, a motorized device. We're saying, if you dismount the device and apparently turn it off, it's no longer a motorized device and you can walk it across using the trail. That's all we're essentially saying tonight.
Yes. Well, I'm kind of confused here. So, where, if these are already banned, where are they already banned?
By city ordinance.
What ordinance?
We have existing ordinance prohibits motorized vehicles in our parks and trails. I can't cite the actual ordinance that exists.
Kathy can look it up.
Which is what we have to keep.
Okay, and, all right. So, I'm going to assume that, I'll just take that as being correct. I do have some comments here. It's like, last time we talked about this, I promised, I said I could ride the Riverwalk Trail fast, so I did. I couldn't ride it at twenty miles an hour, but I went from, and you've got to remember, I'm old, out of shape, and I haven't ridden a bicycle in a year. I rode the Riverwalk Trail from the Cell Avenue trailhead to Reynolds Avenue today. That's almost exactly one mile in three minutes and thirty-six seconds. And that is seventeen miles an hour. Okay? And then, on the way back, I just rode like, like I was, didn't have a care in the world, and it took me nine minutes, and that's seven miles an hour. All right? So, my first comment is, okay. Okay. Okay, so that specifically prohibits any park, public park.
And trail.
No, it doesn't say trail. Drive, operate across there in motor, except on established roads and trails. Specifically doesn't, so.
Specifically it doesn't.
The nine forty-four oh four oh bans it in parks. But, and I'm going to address all that. So, so first of all, my first comment is, in the proposed ordinance, in the first section, it refers to, well, it actually, multiple times, it refers to provided that the user operate the OP DMD at the speed of pedestrian traffic. I would like to see that eliminated in all sections. So, I, it's in three places, in nine forty-four oh forty, oh forty-six oh twenty, and oh four one fifty-five, all three of those. It's the last part of the sentence.
What do I do with that down under the trail? Is, all public doors.
Yeah, okay. So, so first of all, I'd like to see that eliminated. I don't think it's reasonable to restrict a ADA vehicle, or whatever you want to call them, to the speed of pedestrian traffic. At the very least, I think it's reasonable to restrict it, or to say, you're allowed to go at least as fast as somebody who doesn't have a care in the world and they're pedaling a bicycle down the trail. And I'm going to say that's seven miles an hour. And I'm going to say the ADA people, they don't give a, they don't care. And I was going seventeen miles an hour down the trail, and I passed a bunch of people and nobody said, "Slow down," or "A," or "Watch it," or whatever. It's, you know, it's just, so, I think any reference to a speed is out of place, and I don't think it's enforceable anyhow. And then, the second thing here, this is, this is kind of a built-in opt-out if we decide that we don't like this regulation of banning these everywhere, is if you look at the first section, nine point forty-four, under A, about, right in the middle, it's talking about these restrictions, and it says, "Except upon established roads and trails specifically designated and marked for such purpose." So, that's already in this ordinance. So, at some point in the future, if we decided there was a trail, like let's say, the Greenhorn Trail in the Hogbacks, that we wanted to approve these for, we could simply mark it as approved for motorized vehicles. So, that's built in here. So, I like that. In, in that, that particular phrase is in the first section, it's in the first section here, nine forty-four oh four oh. It's not in the next one, nine forty-six oh two oh, and then it is in the next one. So, I would like to see the phrase, "Except upon established roads and trails specifically designated and marked for such purpose," added on page two to the first section listed there, under, right after, well, that first sentence ends with, "Are not allowed on the trail." Cross out, "are not allowed on the trail," and add, "Except upon established roads and trails specifically designated and marked for such purpose." So, it kind of.
Makes sense.
It's, it's, right now, not allowed, but at some point in the future, we could say, without having to go through revising the ordinance, it would simply be a case of put signage up saying, "Motorized vehicles allowed," or whatever. So, two things. Eliminate the reference to the speeds in the three places that it occurs, and change that section that I was referring to, to add that part about, "Except upon established roads and trails."
And what is your opinion? I'm curious about powering down the Segway across the pedestrian bridge.
I think right now, the only, the only reason I would say you need to do that is if it specifically is in an easement agreement with the railroad, that prohibits it. Other than that, I would say, they can ride them up if they're capable. I, I'm assuming that the Segway operator carries liability, well, I'm not assuming, I know they do. They have to have liability insurance to operate this business, and they're assuming a certain amount of liability by having their clients ride these up a ramp. And riding on a ramp is more difficult, I've ridden segways, riding on a ramp is more difficult than riding on flat ground. But it's not a particularly steep ramp, so, but, so, my take on it is, if it's not in the railroad's right-of-way, let them ride them over the pedestrian bridge. Can't do it on the Black Bridge, because I don't have, I'm reasonably certain that's in the railroad right-of-way, but the pedestrian, the whole point is to get them to the other side of the river.
For sake of information, an additional condition was in the GOCO grant, which monies were used to build the bridge and the trails, and that too includes language that no motorized vehicles will be on the trail. That's in the grant.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we've demonstrated, you can dismount this, this piece of equipment and get over the bridge.
I'm not convinced that a ten-year-old could drag that thing up over the bridge.
Someone may have to help them.
How much of an inconvenience is that, instead of going over the bridge to get where you want to go, go across on First Street?
That's dangerous.
If there was a street light on First Street, I'd say no problem at all.
But in the summer, with the high volume of traffic that comes down Royal Gorge Boulevard, and they come into town right there pretty fast, they go faster than the speed limit in a lot of cases, it's dangerous to try and cross right there.
Yeah. And the grant we got, oh, that was a GOCO grant, so it's a state grant, but, well, the state doesn't, I mean, it's a, the state doesn't consider them motor vehicles either. So, the state's not going to come down here and give us crap about.
That's for vehicle registration purposes. They do the same thing with mopeds. They don't want to be in that business, but doesn't mean it doesn't have a motor.
This technology didn't exist like five, ten years ago. I think maybe they were thinking motorized vehicles, they were more thinking like vroom, vroom, not.
Yeah, well.
Tori?
Well, I was going to say, right now, there's, there's nothing in here that specifically prohibits riding this on the pedestrian bridge, but in general, it's prohibited by the language that's in here. It's not, and there's nothing that specific, well, there's nothing in here that specifically addresses what to do with segways on the pedestrian bridge.
Can I ask you a question?
Mr. Martin, go ahead.
Can you look, do you have access to municipal code? Take him, have him read four point four four oh four zero.
Four point four?
Nine point four four.
Four four and nine point four six.
No, I just want him to read nine four four point four oh.
Point four oh or oh four oh?
Four four oh.
Nine point four four zero four zero.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that only specifically to a park?
Trails are in four six.
Well, it says within any public park.
Yeah, but that's trails within a park.
Right. A trail within a park. Is the bridge in that, in a park?
Yes.
Well, in four six, it addresses trails. That addresses parks. If you go to nine four six, it prohibits the use on trails.
Is that same bridge?
Right, so Kathy's correct. Nine four six is the next section, which is the rules and regulations on trails.
Okay, well, here, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to amend the ordinance.
With those two amendments?
Pardon?
Those two amendments?
Yes, and just to restate, the, my motion to amend ordinance number forty-three, series of twenty seventeen, would remove, in three places, the phrase, "Provided that the user operates the OP DMD at the speed of pedestrian traffic." That's the first one. The second one would be in the section titled nine forty-six point zero two zero four, after the word transportation, I'm going to make sure this reads right, eliminate the wording, "Are not allowed on the trail," and add the language, "Except upon established roads and trails specifically designated and marked for such purpose."
We've got it.
That's my motion.
Okay. Are we ready?
Got a motion to amend.
A motion to amend, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Smith, second. So now, we're taking this original reading and doing all that except for the amendment that we have there.
We're going to vote on the amendment.
We're going to vote on the amendment first, all right.
You're going to amend them, you're going to amend the amendments.
And then, just my comment will be that, well, my comments will be that I think, first of all, these electric devices or these mobility-assisted devices, I think any of them, their max speed is twelve miles an hour, or something like that. I think we got that in an earlier meeting, and I've established that I can legally go seventeen miles an hour, and if you're in shape, you could go faster. It's, so, I think the speed limit is irrelevant. And the other one is, it just opens the possibility, without having to rewrite the ordinance, that at some time in the future, if this or any other council decides it would be a good idea to allow segways, for instance, on a particular trail, all it takes is putting up some signs. But in the meantime, it would be prohibited.
Does everybody understand this? Because we're going to go for vote.
Adam looks like he's nervous about saying something. Adam, is there something you want to interject? Please, come and do it.
I just have a couple of comments. I think Dennis has a couple of good points. However, on the speed, I think we should leave that in there for the Central Business District, the third change that's in the ordinance. That's the reason bicycles and skateboards are not allowed on the sidewalks, is because of disparity in speed between them and pedestrians and the crowded sidewalks. So, I would ask that you leave it there, but your point's taken on the trail. When you, if you're going to compare these, if you're going to compare these to bicycles and that sort of thing, that makes sense. But I would ask that you leave the speed discrepancy there in that third section for the Central Business District.
In ten point oh four point one fifty-five?
Yeah, yeah. The only other point I had that you may or may not want to go there is, it would actually make it easier, because you're absolutely right, we're not, this ordinance doesn't say that at some point in time, there's not a spot, or spots where it may be appropriate. The only thing I would ask further is maybe you designate who decides that at this point now, based on some, there's a lot of our code that's like that, so you could, you could designate the city administrator and the parks director to decide that or something in the future with, I don't know, there's, we have other sections in the code that are similar to that.
If you're inclined to do that, I would say the city administrator or the city administrators designate, just to make it clean.
And that way, then, if there's somebody like this that comes forward in the community and there's something different or new or whatever, then they can work with them, and we're not coming back here doing that again. City administrator may not want to do that, but it's an idea.
I think it's a very sensitive subject matter, and I think the council should be party to it.
I agree. I agree.
And I think, based on what Adam says, you know, let's leave the speed in there because it's unenforceable anyway. No one's going to go out there with a radar gun or anything else to see if somebody's going fast or not. Just leave the speed there and do the other one that you want.
It's, well, here, tell you what, it's, I'd like to amend my motion to re, to leave the speed clause in section ten point zero four point one five five, which relates to s- to sidewalks.
Would you also like to amend that the designated, um, purpose would be designated by city council?
Yes. And the other one...
That's understood.
Uh, the, the second amendment to my amendment would be, uh, where we have, "Except upon established roads and trails specifically designated by city council and marked for such purpose."
And bear in mind, this is coming back for a second reading, so I would like to see this for the next reading, with all the necessary attachments, detachments, and speeds. Okay?
We're gonna go backwards, Dennis, you got, I got a, a motion on that. Is anybody gonna second that, or, we're going back to the first?
I seconded it.
You second it this time, too?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Roll set.
Can I, can one of us restate what the amendment is now, just so council knows exactly what they're voting on?
Would you like to do that, Mr. Cory?
I'm not sure, but I'll give it a try.
I'll make sure you're sure.
So...
I'll be listening.
In section one, um, there will be an amendment to add the language, "After such purpose by the city council." So, the designation will be "By the city council."
It would be right after, "Specifically designated by council and..."
He had it after the word designated.
Okay, that's fine. So, specifically designated by the city council and marked for such purpose.
Yep.
Also, in section one, the language starting with, "Provided that the user operates," will be deleted. In section two, the language will be added from section one, "Except upon established roads and trails specifically designated by the city council and marked for such purpose." After the word "transportation," the words, "Are not allowed on the trail," will be deleted. And also, the language starting with, "Provided," at the very end of section two, will be deleted. And then, section three, um, in the middle, the roads, the language, "Except upon established roads and trails specifically designated by the city council and marked for such purpose," and the remainder of the language is the same.
I concur.
I agree.
Okay, we're gonna call for a roll. Would you call a roll, please?
Can I just wanna comment, sorry, that between the first reading and the second reading, I would like to know what the easement is at the bridge.
Sure, we can do that.
It will also bring you the GOCO language.
GOCO and, yeah, the easements.
There's also a C-DOT grant as well.
Neither one of those, I think, uh, might look at designating that one small stretch if it doesn't violate the GOCO or the, uh, any other easements.
Yeah, well, if we're gonna do, check the GOCO language, I, I think it would be worth specifically checking with GOCO, whoever the heck that is, whether or not their language prohibiting motorized vehicles includes Segways.
Okay.
So, so, Tony, we want both to check the easement and go and talk to GOCO specifically about the bridge and the ability of Segways just to cross the bridge, and if that would, by their definition, be a violation or not, or if city council could designate that one spot.
Okay.
I agree.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes? Aye. Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Deena is still here. What a trooper.
Now, we're back to the original ordinance.
So, now you need the original...
We have to go back.
The amended original ordinance.
Alright, so I need a motion to approve, approve the ordinance as amended.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Weed?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I make the motion to approve ordinance number forty-three, series of twenty-seventeen, as amended on first reading.
Mr. Gill, second. Would you call a roll, please? Any discussion? Good, call a roll.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Approved by a majority vote.
Mr. Howard, I just wanna point out, there is another reading that will be for the next council meeting, and we're gonna do some more research in the meantime.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I was hoping you were gonna ride that out.
Thirteen A is Public Hearing, Zone Code Amendment, Title Number Seventeen, Regarding Trash. I would like to open the public hearing at this time, could I have a report from our community development director?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Um, so, an update on the trash ordinance. We just spoke about this last Wednesday, um, at the Vision Committee meeting, and based on the three comments, or actually, four comments that were made at that meeting, the updated ordinance is before you this evening. And specifically, those four tweaks that were made are, number one, uh, there was clarification in eight point one-six point oh-four-oh-B, um, clarifying regular trash service versus the discussion about construction or other types of uses, so that's been clarified. Number two, the use of a business dumpster for construction and permitting that has been clarified by adding eight point one-six point zero-six-zero-G. And thirdly, we have clarified, um, oh-seven-oh-D to specifically add the language within the right-of-way. So, those were the three points of clarification that have been modified from the version you saw last Wednesday. And then, the fourth comment that was made about illegal dumping is already covered in another section of our municipal code, so that did not need to be added. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for council? Mr. Meisner?
Just have a comment. I don't mean to offend anybody, but I continually get frustrated by staff's lack of trying to contact businesses that are impacted by ordinances that we're trying to implement. I'll leave it at that.
We talked about the last time getting a hold of Howard, and he'll actually do it. Is that something, or...
Given the timeframe, staff did not, but, uh, one member of council had asked for information to be provided, so that, that could be passed out, so we did not.
Okay, this is a...
My point wasn't, at the time we're voting on this, at the time that we're creating these documents, that's where we need to be consulting with those businesses that are directly impacted by these ordinances, and we continue to fail to take that step.
Okay. We can do it between the first and the second reading?
Sure.
They already got it.
They got it?
It's not the point. Point is, when you're creating the document, and I realize you went out and did a viewing, but since that time, there has been no contact by city staff with any of those trash companies.
Okay. Are there any comments from the audience? Any further discussion from council?
In your conversations with them, what were their comments on the proposed ordinance?
Irrelevant.
Okay. Any comments from, uh, council? I'm gonna close the public hearing, and ordinance number forty-four, series two thousand and seventeen, this is the first reading. I need three to introduce, Mr. Schumacher, Mr. Weed, and Mr. Hockes. Would you leave my title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number forty-four, series of twenty-seventeen, and ordinance repealing and reenacting chapter eight point one-six of the municipal code pertaining to the trash disposal and amending section five point two-four point oh-two-oh-B regarding exemption from trash hauler license.
Thank you. Could I have a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to try to make a motion...
Okay.
To approve ordinance number forty-four, series of twenty-seventeen, on first reading.
Second. Mr. Weed, second. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Did you have discussion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
That was an aye.
It was an aye, I can't hear him tonight. Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Approved by a majority vote.
Okay, number fourteen is Executive Session. We are going to go into executive session to talk about tax collection, municipal judge and city administrators evaluation and contract. I need a motion and a second on that.
Uh, Mayor, council, I move that we, that city council hold an executive session to determine the positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations, and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS twenty-four-dash-six dash four-oh-two-four-E, and to consider personal matters pursuant to CRS twenty-four-dash-six dash four-oh-two-four-F.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
We will adjourn to executive session at eight forty.